The Pledge of Allegiance of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all. Thank you all for coming. First we'll have a roll call. Tom is excused. Deb Willer?
Here.
Pat Facto?
Yes.
Adrian Tarasca?
Here.
And we have, of course, our attorney Eric Cusson, our bookkeeper Brenda Musa. Janine Brousse is our town clerk. Sean Lynch is our deputy town clerk. And Frank DiAgostino over here, he runs the highway, the buildings, the airport, and a lot of other things. Thank you very much. First, what we want to do is, this Saturday is the 120th anniversary celebration of Alcoa. And as you know, it all affects many of us in many generations. So at this point, I'd like to read to you a proclamation declaring June 18th, 2022, Messina as Alcoa Day and anniversary of 120 years of Messina. Whereas in 1902, Alcoa, formerly known as the Pittsburgh Reduction Company, established business in Messina. And whereas Alcoa grew ground in Messina, New York, on what is now the world's oldest continuously operating smelter in Messina, New York. And whereas Alcoa smelter has stood as an integral part of the Dagenada Messina community. And whereas in 1907, the Pittsburgh Reduction Company became the aluminum company of America. And whereas we all recognize the aluminum company of America as Alcoa. And whereas the Town of Messina recognized the important role that Alcoa provided generations of families. And whereas Alcoa has been critically important to the economic vitality of Messina. And whereas Alcoa has provided income for the workers and their families. And whereas Alcoa has provided a quality of living for thousands of residents. And whereas the Town of Messina presents this proclamation in care of Messina Operations Manager, Dr. Derek Lucy. And now therefore, we, the Town of Messina, do hereby recognize June 18th, 2022, as Alcoa Day for its 120th anniversary. And we call this observance to the attention of all of our citizens in Messina. And Derek, if you could come around and portray your picture here.
Don't know which camera I'm on.
Again, have a good time on Saturday. And again, Deb Willer. Don't feel like you have to wait around if you have, I know you have lots of planning to do for Saturday, so thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we've got another presentation. Linda McQuinn, Don Meisner. How about stepping forward and talking and showing what we have here?
I'll go first.
Linda, as you all know, is a grant writer, and she's also working with Don Meisner, our fishing person, our tourism guy, okay?
Yeah, and Linda's asked me to speak first. And what we're presenting here, I thought, might give those of you that haven't been part of the whole sort of journey that we've been on to get us to this point, this, we're going to show you an ad that was done by the national producers of major league fishing when they came here last year. And they asked me to speak about what I felt about Messina. And so what you're going to see is the ad that they ran that was part of their national TV coverage. And at the time, they gave us the rights to this so that we can use it in any way that we want to continue to promote the message of what we're trying to get across about why we want people to come to Messina. You know, again, it's fishing in the beginning, but it's about the experience of coming to this town and what it can mean, not only to our town and the future of our town, but the future of these people that might come and discover what we are here. So let's take a look at this ad right now. And I did this at the Veterans Park, just around the corner. I stood down there along the water and did this take. I've always been down by, and for years, my whole life, it's been about the outdoors. For over 20 years, I did a TV show on street segments, people pushing all over the United States and Canada. But I gotta tell you, the whole time I was doing this, no matter where I was, I kept thinking, you know, I think I've left the best at home. And I became almost obsessed to tell the story of what this area was about, and particularly the little town of Messina. Messina exists on the St. Lawrence River, and a lot of people think this might be the best fishing in the world. And people are coming here from tournaments all over the continent, but there's more to Messina than that. Messina is a place where you can bring your family, and you can feel like you've come home, even if you've never been here before. There's beautiful trails and ponds and like foothills of the Adirondack Mountains. Time has stood still here. It's like going back to the way life used to be. And for so many people around the country who think New York is all the same, well, this is a very special part of New York that we hope people will come and visit. Because not only do you have the big river to fish for big fish, but you have these little rivers where you don't need a boat. You don't need anything but the desire to go out there and enjoy the outdoors. And that's what this area is really about. No matter what you enjoy, whether it's biking, running, hiking, swimming, there's someplace here for you. But I think I've left the best for last. They talk about Messina being North Country nice. When people come here, the first thing they tell me is they say, people are so friendly here. So if you want to discover North Country nice, we invite you to come to Messina. The welcome wine馆s are always out, and I promise you, you won't run out of things to do. So, I had no idea what I was going to say, just like when I come here and talk to you, I really don't know, but it's what I feel, and it's what's driven us. And this is the message that we're trying to project as we go forward. We're trying to bring people here to discover, not just the great fishing. And I've said this before, and it's a continuum, and I don't mean to constantly say the same thing, but I constantly feel the same thing. This area is special, and I've devoted my whole life to coming to this point, and I'm trying to bring everything that has been part of my life. Thirty years of doing television, doing radio, and this is where it's brought me, and I hope to be able to make that difference. But we're doing this as a team, and I talked to you about the team that we've developed. And we're working every week in trying to make the festivals that we're having this summer our big national championship. We're hoping that this will be everything that we've set and that people around the country can see that. So I'm excited. We're working hard at doing this every day, and Linda now is going to speak about, because the component that she brings is something that I think is vital as we go forward to develop all those other aspects of Messina that have to stand out as we go into the future. So go ahead, Linda.
Okay. The reason that Don wanted to show this this evening, and the reason that we felt that it would be a very powerful presentation is because it represents not only what Messina can offer, but it represents a vision that we should be looking for as we do grantsmanship for Messina. I think that is very important. So two things I've provided to you this evening. The first is the budget for the Market New York grant, and it has a breakdown in terms of what Market New York through Empire State Development will provide for, and the things that will be the matching costs that Messina will take care of. And currently, Don is doing a lot of door-to-door effort trying to find donors for the part of the budget that Messina is responsible for, primarily the artist fees, the fireworks. Those concerts are very important. We hope that they'll bring a lot of folks to the intake. And so if anyone has questions about this budget or needs something explained, I certainly can help you with that. We have just finished the RFP process and have secured a minority of women-owned businesses to help satisfy the 30% requirement for that contract. So we're making good progress, and we expect that July 21st, the Empire State Directors' Board will approve the contract. It'll be ready for full execution, and then we can start assembling our invoices for billing. And I've been working very closely with Brenda, so that's very helpful with that entire process. The next item that I have provided to you this evening is a position paper, which I'm calling a capture strategy. The reason that I decided that this would be proposed is because we're about six weeks away from the deadline for the consolidated funding application. There are a number of projects that will be appropriate for this particular funding round, and I suggested that Messina look at the capture strategy, because if we don't try to go after those monies, other people will. Other municipalities will take advantage, and we really want to ensure that we have access and utilize everything that's available to this community. So I urge you to read that at your convenience, and then if you have questions, feel free to give me a call or send me an email.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
That's a detail, which is good. Thank you very much. Going back to the agenda here, approval of minutes of May 18th. Can I have some motions, please?
Big motion.
Pat in a second.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Down to the resolutions. Authorizing the Town Board's complaint Saturday, June 18th, 2022, as Alcoa Appreciation Day for their 120th anniversary.
So moved.
Okay, Deb, second. Adrian, all in favor?
Aye.
Authorizing the Town Board to pay the village of Messina Water Department for a water bill due to overconsumption, not to exceed $300.
I'll make the motion.
And a second?
I'll second.
Deb, all in favor?
Aye.
Approval to purchase a Ferris mower for the Messina International Airport in the amount of $17,099.
I'll make the motion.
Adrian, in second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and this next one, I will read this first. That's the resolution for the Town Board, Town of Messina San Francisco, in June 15th, 2022. Whereas the Town Board of the Town of Messina desires to maintain a healthy work environment in which all individuals are treated with respect and dignity and be free from unlawful discrimination, harassment, and retaliation. And whereas in furtherance of this purpose, the Board has considered the Town of Messina anti-discrimination and harassment policy as incorporated herein. Therefore, resolved by the Town Board of Town of Messina that the Town of Messina anti-discrimination and harassment policy as incorporated herein is hereby adopted and shall be entered into the minutes and records of Town of Messina by the Town Clerk. And again, approval to, for the Board to accept the Town of Messina anti-discrimination and harassment policy, I would give some motions.
I'll make the motion.
Pat in a second?
I'll second.
Adrian, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, yeah. Thank you. Continuing on. Authorizing the Town Board to approve the assessment for Hart Haven Shaggy Center. That's the HHSC, right? Okay, as follows. 2021, $3.75 million assessed value with refunds, but no interest. 2022, $3.75 million assessed value. RPTL, Brenda, is what?
No property tax.
Thank you, okay. 727 to apply. The assessment will be $3.75 million for 2023, 2024, and 2025, taking into account that this includes the fact that land area has been reduced with a split to Well Now, which is a Persian Care Center? Okay. And I need motions for that, please.
I'll make the motion.
And a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Approval to renew the 2022-2023 contract with Jason Hendricks. The amount will remain the same as the last contract. And again, we're very, very pleased with what he's been doing to the website for both the village and the Town of Messina, making vast improvements. I'm hearing good things. I really appreciate that. Could I have a motion, please?
I'll make the motion.
Okay. All right, and a second?
I'll second.
Adrian, and of course, Debbie, approves. Good. Okay, transfers and amendments. Audit people. Whoever, oh, yeah, I guess I might make that motion. Yeah, the ones who signed the audits. I'll make the motion. Okay, Deb?
And I'll second.
And Pat with a second. Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
And warrants?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, Pat, in second?
I'll second.
Deb, and all in favor? Okay. Brenda, at this point, would you like to give us a financial report?
Sure. So I've arrived at the Town Board with the revenue expense actual budget comparison report for the month of June, and I'll break it down as a summary for use. I have the A Fund, General Fund, General Town Line, along with the Highway Funds and the Library. For 2022, the revenue, I'm comparing between '22 and '21 as of June, and our '22-22 revenue is down $196,763 June '21. Their expenses for 2022 is down $571,681 in June '21. So comparing June to June from our last meeting to this meeting. And then for now, I filed our sales tax report from March through May, and of course, I know Frank has mentioned how the jet fuel has gone up. And so as of March, when the fuel was purchased, it was $3.08550 per gallon. And then you end up in May 9th, and we're up to $5.27210 per gallon. So there's been quite an increase in cost purchasing of jet fuel, like a $20,000.
Yeah, in fact, Frank, just to give us a logical, a realistic comparison with dollars, give us one month compared to the last.
I'll compare the end of last year, probably $20,000. The first load in March of this year was $56,000.
Wow.
And it has dropped. The last load was around $54,000.
Okay.
We saved $4,000.
Major increase in jet fuel.
Yeah, and you're talking 9,500 gallons. It's a tanker load. At least one to two loads a month has dropped.
Thank you.
Also, the Town Bank balance compared to June '22 to June 2021, and the difference is $31,746 less than last year where we were at at this time.
That's good. Thank you very much for doing that. I appreciate it. Take a nice, I thought it was easier to put it on. Yeah, that's good. Okay, visitor reports, Town and Highway.
Highway, Unit 22 replaced the backup alarm, repaired the light issue. Unit 33 replaced backup alarm, repaired right light issue. We repaired tailgate lock mechanism, replaced right front airbag assist bag for the front tire suspension. We finally removed the spinners from the plow trucks. Spinner's over, I guess, so finally got that done. So last thing we do. Picked up Unit 50 from fifth wheel in Malone, diesel in Malone, replaced, they had to replace the hardline fuel line from the engine block for the dozer injector. Unit 9 pickup truck, we installed a new painted truck box, wired lights, installed bumper and fuel tank port. We paved driveways on Dennis and Highland Road that were damaged from water and sewer line breaks. Replaced both rear springs in Unit 8 pickup truck. Prepared Units 1, 6, 22, 48, and a dozer trailer for New York State inspection. They all passed. John Deere riding mower, replaced clutch and spindle and mowing deck. We hot patched the North Racket River Road. We've chipped the brush pile twice. We traveled the Town Roads to pick up large debris before mowing road sides. We removed downed trees on the Dennis and O'Neil Pond for the bridge road. We mowed graveyards and all of the required town properties three times. We cleaned up the ditch by Tripoli and South Grass Road intersection, continued to work on cleanup of Island Road with sewer line breaks. East Messina Waterline Project, as of last week, we had 6,000 feet of new main in and had hooked up 10 more water service connections back to the new main. We are in the process of now pressure testing and coordinating another section, another 2,000 feet of lines that was installed the last week and a half, and they're getting ready now to do some cleanup and move their temporary water lines east of, farther down east of Home Hill Road, making pretty good progress. Spring cleanup numbers for 2020, 2022, numbers of loads, 218, total weight was 93,442 or 4.68, 46.8 tons, total cost of $6,214. We started mowing road sides on May 30th. We were hoping to finish that up this week, but we, our mower went down, our tractor went down today. We've got a broken hydraulic line, hard line that goes into the filter that broke, and we've got one ordered, should be here tomorrow. I'll put that back together. Messina Airport, boutiques air at numbers for May, in plane 412, deplane 433, for a total of 845. Lanes were 177. Cancelled for weather were four, cancelled other were five. So obviously, nine flights were cancelled for May. Reifenberg to start the terminal apron rehab project on the 20th next week. We've been in, just give you some history, we've renegotiated a new contract with TSA for the space day lease at the terminal building. There's four different offices. We've been working with GSA, TSA, and Town of Messina, trying to come, they're in that lease agreement they give us, they give, there's $30,000, they don't give, there's $30,000 for a refresh, paint, new rugs, clean floors, strip floors. And we put that up the bid over a month ago, never got any bids or received any bids for it. So we had a meeting with them last week. We got some more information. We've got some information to, for some contacts that may be interested in work. I called them, and we did get a bid yesterday, so we have that information. And hopefully, we have, there's another meeting with GSA and TSA next Wednesday. Hopefully, we'll finalize this and we can get this going and get those areas refreshed as required by the lease. We already talked about the Ferris mower. Airport, obviously employees, it's, grass is going like crazy. You've got 600 acres and all out there, so. Messina, I'll go back to the airport. There's some other things that came out after this was posted. The boiler inspection was canceled in May. We had it rescheduled for May 8th. It did pass. There's no issues at the museum. There's, a train came in and replaced a leaking pressure relieving device on the gas, in the gas regular and boiler here at the town hall. Airport, we've got three things going on. We learned last week that our security system at the terminal building, which controls cards, card readers, doors, locks, gates, we could not make a new site a card or access card for the airport. Come to find out, the system was, is basically dated to 2007, and it is no longer serviceable. No, no people update the hardware or the software. So we're in the process of working with a company to get that stuff ordered, and probably it's lead time. We're talking four or five weeks potentially to get everything we need, so we're, we can't issue cards. Everything's still working, it's a matter of time where it may not work, so hopefully it doesn't happen, because that's how you get in and out of the place. So, and I'll go over the next two, and then I'll talk about some things we're working on. Obviously, the mower, I've asked for that. And then the, one other issue is that we have a 2015 snow plow. Plow frame needs to be replaced. Of course, that's $25,000. So we've got three projects out there right now, which total roughly $56,000. So I've, working with CNS engineers, there's some grant funding out there in CARES Act, the CRSAA grant and ARPA grant, which totals $86,000. Right now, I'm pretty sure that the CARES Act money that's left can be used for that, and the ARPA grant can be used for that, which for, the only thing we're trying to figure out is if it can be used for the plow pitch. We, one requirement is it has to be American-made. We've got a piece of paper that's married in Harrisville, New York. The only thing that's not American-made is the tires. So it has to be like 95% American-made, and I think that meets the requirement. So those are, I'm hoping to get the lawnmower paid for that way, and hoping to get the security system paid for with the grants that are out there for the airports, which is additional money because of COVID, and hopefully that list doesn't hit us, hit our, we will have to pay it upfront, but we'll get reimbursed that money, so hopefully, I think, I think at least two of them are pretty positive we're going to get, we'll get paid for it, we're just kind of figuring out the third one. Okay, so. And then the canoe launch, State Highway 37, it's a, I guess it's a town Alcoa venture. We mow it, we kind of maintain it. There's aluminum platform that sits out over the water, very, you know, pretty, probably 20 by 20. Well, they got severely damaged this spring by the ice, because it's not, it's just not removable. So I got with my contact at Alcoa, it is their responsibility to fix it. The problem is, it's all aluminum, trying to get the aluminum, trying to get somebody that welds aluminum, so they're hoping to have that opened back up by the middle of July. It's handicap accessible, so if somebody's in a wheelchair and wants to go out to fish, they can go up the ramp and out there. So they, we're going to remove it to make sure the structures that hold it in place didn't get damaged and get it repaired and back up. So they're taking care of all that for us. All right? And Sue, Jet A is still costing us $50,000 plus, every time we're alone, so. That's all I got.
Okay, thank you, Frank. Selective Department?
Yes. If I say anything wrong here, let me know. This is kind of due to me, I've been going there since the beginning of the year, but they continue to have a very good safety record. They haven't lost any time, now 642 days in regards to that. There's also been no reported injuries for the last 324 days, so they've done really well with that. Customer impact chart, I think is kind of important. MED experiences 13,056 customer impact minutes through the month of April. The largest customer impact was due to a failed insulated pole fire that was affected the western portion of Circuit 2303. So it continues to be, from what I've seen from the audit that they proposed, that showed the audit report a couple of months ago, all the things that have come with MED have been really better than most of the other utility companies around, so they do a really good job of that. They report all of these issues associated with anything that breaks down, and it's a very limited amount of time that it takes to get things recovered. Thanks to working with the Town and the crew, they've been able to get ahead of what they wanted to do with the poles in regards to our water, water line work that we've been doing, so they've been ahead of that. Then Steve, a part of that, these two. Cash flow, they have good solid cash flow, increased by $532,000 in April. There are, there's a resolution that Messina Electric Utility Board approved the commercial energy efficiency reimbursement of $1,065. Cybersecurity, they're paying a lot of attention to cybersecurity. They've been going through this process for a while, and they update every month, making sure that things are working where they should be and things are protected. Give thanks to a grant from Alcoa, $10,000 grant in trees. We were short finding anybody for Arbor, Arbor issues, so they did get a grant that came through from Alcoa. Thank you, Alcoa. There's some NYSERDA projects, which I know that Andy's working on, and a resolution that the Messina Electric Utility Board authorizes him to offer a 920 split on any proposals accepted by NYSERDA. There's some thing that's really important that's going to come down, I found the road. It's basically an explanation of CLCPA and market impacts. Basically, New York State's decarbonization effort in state, in other words, trying to make everything electric and not get fossil fuels. That's kind of, that's a New York State initiative, and they're, and they're working, and they're working on possibly getting some grants to do some testing out in the community to be able to try some things out and see what could be done to improve, improve the usage. And there was an executive session, which I don't have to go to, so therefore, I don't think anything happened. Pat, true reporter.
Did you save that for your report, did you mean?
Thank you very much.
Oh, good, so you got all your reports?
Oh, yeah. I gave it to her yesterday.
Thank you. Okay. And that way you will come to nothing in my door, saying, really. Okay, library.
Yes, the library met June 14th. There's, wasn't a lot going on there. They did approve an emergency procedure policy, which they updated. Their summer reading program's gonna start, and they have a pamphlet out, it tells us all their website, and it's full of stuff to do on here, plenty of events. The independent reading program, they have the Storytimes, the Tween Book Club, and they have a Messy Science. Of course, you can go online and you can sign up, they have all different ages. Also, they had a very good turnout at the Sam Miller Night, they came and spoke. Went very well. And that was it. They talked about their long-range plan for the joy review, and that was it. They went in the executive session and that was the end of the meeting for me.
All right, thank you very much. Museum?
Museum Board met on June 2nd. In May, they had 14 assessions, no de-assessions, 30 visitors, 270 website hits, so they are getting a lot of activity there. There was a discussion around the current hours of the museum is open using paid staff Monday through Friday mornings and volunteers on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday afternoons. Additional coverage and access to the museum is by appointment. They are planning to be open the Saturday of the mega reunion, and they're working on some displays specific to that. Josh Davis was introduced as the new historian, he's hit the ground running, so that's a good thing, working on some requests for information that the public has sent. They are going to host a reception to introduce Josh to the public prior to the August meeting. So that's a good thing. And their contractors are continuing to work on the addition, and we did just get a notice from the contractor, and they hope to be finished by late July, early August with that addition. They supply chain, of course, I'll bring it up, so.
Okay, that's it. As far as ethics, you got my report last month, they're planning a meeting again on July 14th. Let's go to Jason, please.
Good evening. First off, I just want to thank the Town Board for renewing the contract, looking forward to yet another exciting year as we enter year four. One of the big things that we're really, really excited about is we actually have a marketing budget this go-around, so. A few weeks ago, Nate and I, we rented a cabin up at Barnhart Island, and we shot hours of footage.
Two days.
Two days, random activities as we set up our commercial for the Explore Messina side, while we continue to aid in the Fish Messina promotion as well. So we're, our focus is we're gonna be wrapping up that commercial here in the next couple of weeks. And the center is, so when we first did our brand strategy...